Good afternoon, everyone. This is a special meeting of the school building committee for December 15, 2022. Thanks for joining us. Tonight, we're going to do just a brief update from the contractor architect and OPM, and I think we can kind of try to run these concurrently have our discussion. But maybe we start. Al, do you want to kind of start off with this description of what's been done in the last couple of weeks and what's kind of remaining?
Yep, you're good. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Okay. Let's see, we've we've done a lot of cleaning, done a lot of punchless work in the past couple of weeks. Tyshu Kim was out, started their list yesterday. We're working on final inspections, tests, and reports. We should have the A2 survey in hand tomorrow. We've received some missing parts that we had previously. Like the AV parts, we've they've gotten those all operational now. You're still missing the parts, but the system is operational. They had a workaround.
Okay, so that's for the gym and conference rooms?
Correct.
Okay.
We got word that the cabinet doors have all been remade and are shipping to the site on Monday. So we should have a good feel for we'll have Tyshu Kim walk around and and look at those once they're installed. Playground is being worked on right now. The mulch is coming on Monday. Will be complete by Wednesday. The missing water heaters will be on site tomorrow.
Okay. Generator startup?
The 14th, yep.
Wednesday.
I'm sorry, I think you cut out for just a little bit. The generator startup is on the 14th?
The generator was, a load test happened on the 14th.
Which was yesterday.
The generators actually live. If you lose power, it's going to kick on.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to pull the switch on that. When was the date on that?
Monday, Monday, we're doing the emergency.
So we'll do the power test with the fire marshal inspector on Monday. But right now it's live. If you lose power, that thing's working.
Yep. The the basin, the new basin at the detention pond in the in the rear has been installed. It was installed yesterday.
What does that mean, Al? What does what does it mean to have a new basin installed?
We we got a a design for a new basin at the edge of the pond. And that was installed per that design yesterday. And it has been inspected by Richter, no, Fussin' O'Neill, Tom from Fussin' O'Neill.
So that's an item I'll share in the procurement update because it was one of the construction change directives. So there's a sketch so we can take a peek at it.
Good, thank you.
It's essentially putting a drain in the retention pond.
Okay, so it's not, when you say basin, I thought it would cover the whole bottom of the.
No, no, not quite.
Al, what sort of effect have you seen that having?
It it was built to the the water level that was established.
That exists, yeah.
He did notice when he was there yesterday that the pond had gone down considerably since his last visit, so. And he sent an email, I believe it was this morning regarding that that it had gone down considerably, not as as much as he had hoped, but it is going down.
Yeah, thank you.
Kitchen is being cleaned right now. The electric is complete. We have just a couple plumbing items to do and be ready for inspections. We have the kitchen inspection scheduled for Tuesday, December 20. Monday. Well, actually, tomorrow we have the ancil system test in the kitchen. That's for the the hood at 8:00 AM.
It's part of the life safety testing.
Yep, with the fire marshal. Yeah, and fire alarm inspection is also tomorrow. CFO inspection is scheduled with Mike for Monday, the 19th in the afternoon. In the morning, we're doing the elevator inspecting with the inspection with the state elevator inspector. Monday, we're also testing all the emergency lighting. Kitchen inspection is scheduled for Tuesday, December 20th with the health department. And we're we're presently doing the balancing of air and water and expect a tab report.
Can you explain that? I understand the air. When you say balancing, I assume you mean through the ducts that it's flowing at the proper amount. What sort of balancing happens in the for water?
They do a water balancing too with flow valves.
So this is into the into the heat pumps and so forth?
Yeah, that's already been done, actually.
Okay. Can you comment, Al, on the blower door test?
The blower door test passed today. Yep.
What was our? Would you share some of the numbers on that?
I I have not received the number.
Yeah, it was point oh nine. Which I believe is, if I remember what BVI said correctly.
The proposed target was point two five.
Yeah, proposed target point two five, and we had a point nine.
Point oh nine.
Point oh nine.
Point one five and point two five, and we're actually point oh nine.
And what can you tell us what that means? That's cubic feet of air. What is it?
That is the cubic feet per minute at seventy five.
Getting technical now.
Thirty five Pascal's.
So it's some type of target range. There's actually no code that tells you what it is. So so we're there. They were pretty happy.
Congratulations on that. That's a very important milestone.
We're all, we're going to get a report on the infrared study. We do have a I think one camera box. The cameras got to get mounted, but it was pretty cool. You could really see the leakage through that open box. So that's got to get fixed. And then one of the doors in the vestibule infrared showed like a half inch sliver. So other than that, I think it's a good report.
Yeah, even with the leakage, we had a point on that.
Yeah, Buckley in Manchester, which is a net zero building as well, failed their first test, and it's been rescheduled for January. So we moved ahead of them.
Good job.
Good job with everyone.
Yeah, that's that's great news. The PV?
EB.
Is is that live? Is that?
PV system. So we did the screening.
One thing I don't know is is it live? Are we returning power to the grid? When does that happen?
Up to ever source.
Yeah, it's.
We should follow up.
Well, we've had John touching base with with them, but he basically.
It's been on top of that.
Yeah, it's when ever source decides to sign off on whatever they go.
So officials inspected it, and they sent off a notice to ever source telling that it's accepted and ready to be operated. Yes, we actually had the owner training on on Monday, the the 12th.
But I would assume that the town would like to start taking advantage of.
Yeah.
The grids for that, right?
Yeah, just in time for the shortest day of the year.
So actually, who's paying the power bill right now?
Newfield.
So you guys have the incentive to.
Yeah.
You got it.
Okay, so are there other questions for Newfield? We'll let Richard talk about his punch list.
I have a question, if I may. Where are we with the septic system, the ejector pump leading to the septic?
It's all being addressed tomorrow. United will be here to finish everything into the startup. Fussin' O'Neill has been scheduled for, I think, 10:00 AM. To witness well, and then they will write their report, and we should be fine.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Can I just further on that? Just one word you used that made me think, was there an issue with it?
No, it's just that we haven't been able look it without throwing them under the bus. The only issue is the local contractor who we've had to step in and manage their subcontractor for them now. So that was the only thing preventing the manufacturer from coming to the project. So we took care of that early this morning, and United will now be on site tomorrow morning.
But functionally, everything's in good shape. It's doing what it's supposed to be doing as far as best we know.
Yes.
The equipment and the plumbing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard, do you want to talk about your walkthrough?
Sure. So I did an all day walk through yesterday. Newfield had forwarded to me their Excel spreadsheet of work to be completed that they exported from their software, their project management software Procore. And so I was able, which is required by the specifications that we get, an Excel spreadsheet of their their punch list. So I did receive that, which was very helpful. I arrived on the site early. I I ran into several members from the community. Chris, you were there. Randy, you were there, and Peter, you were there. And we were all wearing hard hats, which I I have to say, doing a punch list and having to wear hard hats is not exactly what I would have expected. Nevertheless, we did do that. We walked through a few spaces together. Mostly the gymnasium. Spent time looking at the sample wood that was installed by Newfield. The sample number two grade wood, although I understand that some wood was culled from that that wood that's on site in in some number one grade wood, I believe, was mixed into that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, that's all number two.
That's all number two, Richard.
That's all number two. Okay, thank you. So.
Hundred, one hundred percent number two.
On the stage, okay. You had an area that was completely sanded. I I think the whole stage was completely sanded, but you had one area that was finished with a clear coat. So that was the representation of what you would get on the gym floor if you continued with the number two as proposed by Newfield. So I lead that to a discussion by the building committee.
Well, they will call in the 700 square feet of number one, so it will be slightly better than what's on the stage.
Okay, okay. So I thought you had some number one available. I couldn't remember whether you said you mixed that in with the stage sample. Sounds like you have all of that still available.
Yeah, we haven't received that 700 feet. We we won't get that until it's approved. He won't. He doesn't want to buy that until his proposal is either rejected or approved.
Yeah, other things that are still to be done in the gymnasium are the staining of the masonry that is mismatched. These are the masonry walls of the gymnasium. And we did give the contractor that we met on the site some direction about that. So that still needs to be done as well as the wall pads need to be installed as well as the the bleachers. I know all of that has to happen after the gym floors put down, but that's going to happen in the near future. It's it's not installed yet. There's a lot of work that was done. There's no question about it. Primarily, the classrooms, they they are substantially done. There is some finished work that needs to be still done, I believe. I was surprised to see that cabinet doors were removed. Some cabinet doors were removed. And as it turned out, I did bump into somebody who told me that, no, they took them off and they're shipping them back because they're going to refabricate them.
Well, that was due to the AWI that you guys said to non-conformants about. So yes, that's what was done. They were removed. They were brought back to their shop, stripped, sanded, refinished, and meet the AWI standard.
And they'll be back on, they'll be back on site Monday.
Okay, well, that's good. A few minor things that I will note on my punch list when I get it back to you. And this is minor stuff. Some of the locks were installed upside down so that you could not actually lock the cabinet doors. It just means reversing the lock. That's all. It's not a big deal. The corridors are not quite done. There's on the, I think, on the lower level, the weight scot is installed, but on the upper level appeared not to be installed yet. Some base is missing in classrooms on the upstairs. But it's it's close. We did see some a defect in the carpet in the music room. Actually, Chris Giefner brought that to my attention. So that, but that's fixable. So what I what I don't know is the status of.
Richard, what kind of defect did you see and where?
It it was, this was in the art room.
The music room. Art room has the four ball.
Do we know about that?
I I noticed it when I went in there. Are you talking about like the high ridge?
Yes, yes, exactly. I mean, that's fixable.
But are we on it with?
Yeah, that's just, that's just them cutting the tiles too tight. Yeah, when they set them, so they either got to go back and try to re-roll it or remove those pieces and cut them a little bit less.
It's insulation defect. It's not in the pattern.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's just a tile.
They installed it too tight. Since Richard walked, the entire upstairs, all the Wayne Scotting has been installed. And honestly, I don't know of any other base missing in any of the classrooms except for at the Cubbies where there is no base.
That's correct. Ben asked to me to look at an alternative to rubber base. And I told him I I didn't think that was a good solution. He was proposing a trim piece of maple. In the long run, that's going to wear, and I think we're still better off with the rubber base that we had specified, although it does have to be shorter. So my intention is to take the information that I compiled in my punch list, put that into a binder, three ring binder, and that section will be TSKP interior punch list. I'm expecting similar punch lists from our MEP consultants, Kolaron, and that will be in its own section. And then we have also the punch lists from Boss O'Neill and Richter and Seegan. I'm expecting a punch list from the food service designer. I believe he's coming out on Monday, at least that's what he told me. So that also will be inserted into binder in its own section. I haven't addressed any of the documents that need to be submitted such as ASBILs or project maintenance manuals. Presumably, there will be forthcoming as well.
Richard, question. I was going to ask you yesterday, obviously, we spent a fair amount of time during the tour looking at the the floor mockup, and then we also were talking about the masonry blocks in the gym wall. But question I had to you about the masonry was I know from a maintenance standpoint, a great care has been taken with siding and everything else to avoid anything that requires basically maintenance, right? Any sort of painting, stating, keeping, keeping up with things. You know, what I saw with the, at least the the mockup I saw for the clear coat or the the treatment or whatever that had gone on in an attempt to darken some of the lighter blocks didn't seem like it closed that gap a ton. You could still, I think, see a fair amount of contrast there. So I'm just curious, you know, from a maintenance standpoint, is is it not really a viable option just to whether it's staining or painting or whatever, but just to kind of go over all of those blocks? Because it just seems to be like maybe they're going to be covered in mats, but you wouldn't. I wouldn't think that that would be something that required a lot of perpetual maintenance. You know, if you were just trying to achieve a more uniform color, but but you're the design expert, so maybe that's a horrible mistake.
You're talking about the masonry walls?
Yeah, so like where you have the gray, the natural color, like if you basically I don't know if you would be trying to color match, like paint something on or stain something on that was basically a more natural color match, but just to even out you know, that that very jarring two-tone you get where you have larger sections of dark blocks juxtaposed with white blocks, lighter blocks, I should say. I just didn't know if, you know, that would end up being the simplest sort of remedy in the end, but.
No, so applying it evenly over the whole wall is just going to accentuate the difference between the the tones. So masonry staining is actually quite a skill. Sometimes we have a situation where it's a different branch of masonry. It doesn't look exactly how it was in the samples that were provided. And so very often, Masons do get a stainer to come out and blend in masonry units that are mismatched for one reason or another. It does happen. There are experts that do that. And so I would rely on that stainer to apply the appropriate amount of stain on the lighter basingary to make it darker. So it's more closely resembling the darker masonry and use some judgment about blending in. So we don't have that very obvious glaring difference. There are like large areas of dark masonry all collected together in one area, which makes it worse. So the masonry stainer does need to take the time to blend it in. And the intention is not to have a dead match everywhere. The intention is to have a fairly evenly distributed variation. It's a much more natural kind of look. So that's, that's my recommendation, and that's instructions that we gave to the Masons.
One more. Ryan, are you done with your?
Yeah.
Did you mention, Ryan, I I was in connection issues. On the upper right, which wall is that? The south wall up high, there's a different texture, different sort of finish. It's much more shiny. There's a a bulk of it is much more shiny, Richard. What what can happen about that? Did you notice that? What's going on there?
So I did notice that when we looked at the gym, when we were, they first wiped off or washed off all of the coating that appeared to be on the masonry. And that's why you couldn't tell initially. It wasn't until that masonry was clean that the differences were noticed. And I did notice that some of the masonry was shinier than other masonry. I'm not sure I understand why that is, but I would rely on the the person who's staining the masonry to to do a good job to not only try to blend the shininess, but also the the tone. Just let them.
Well, that's a, that just feels generous to me. I mean, we've talked about staining, 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 and nothing about the the finish, the texture. So I think it needs to be specified that both of those issues need to be addressed, if not solved.
Okay. I'll keep that. I'll put that on the punch list as well.
Steve, you had a question?
I was just going to say the same thing as Chris. There there's definitely a difference in sheen, and I was, my question was whether the standing will resolve that.
I'll I'll put it on the punch list. I'm not sure.
Other questions for Richard?
I do have one other. My my turn, right? I don't mean to cut. Okay, as I think you know, Richard, certainly, anyway, the the felt between the slats in some of the lowered ceilings, the wood ceilings is really bothersome, Lee, loose, and some of it's flapping. I stand that there's intention of putting some pin nails and so forth in there. I see that as a very short term.
Yeah, Chris, unfortunately, you're cutting out. I think we got the.
Yeah, I I know the area, and I know the felt that Chris is alluding to.
This was, and I can imagine that with especially into the pre-K area that those are going to be.
This was actually something that Jeff brought up in one of his reports as well. So we do need to put that on the punch list to make sure it's taken care of. But I know exactly the area that you're referring to. You pointed it out to me.
Good, thank you.
There there was something that was brought up, Randy, by you. We weren't together at that moment, although I did look at the sensory room. I noticed that the lock set that we specified is, which is a fail-safe kind of lock, a mechanism that needs power to be completed was not installed. And I think that's because there's no circuit to that lock set that needs to be installed. So that's one item that is a scope item that needs to be added. And maybe the best way to handle that is a CCD. I'm not sure at this point. But the comment you sent to me in a photograph as well is that Lauren, the principal, would like to have a vision panel either in the door or in the wall, whichever is easier, so that activity in the room can be observed by a teacher. So I had reached out. I responded to you with a copy to Lauren, hopefully that we can talk about that. Because I'm not sure that that's the intention is to have the door closed with without an adult in it. I believe the intention was to have an adult in the room at the same time as a student is in there. If that's not the intention that we need to talk about what really the purpose of it is.
Right. It sounded to me like there would be instances where the teacher was not in the room, but you should just with talk, talk with Lauren about what the needs are.
Okay, so this is an item that if there's a vision panel that's required, and if the intention is to observe a child who's alone in the room, it can be achieved. It just will have to happen later.
Right, that's not a CO issue.
I don't believe it is.
Mary?
Forgive me if I missed this, when the concept, the idea of the gym floor was being talked about before, but what is the ultimate decision? Last time we met, we were going to look at what was on the stage and then make a decision about the whole floor.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that momentarily here.
Okay, thank you.
I did send pictures. I don't know if you got those and saw those.
No, I did not.
Okay, I hope it got to most people, some people.
I have a couple handy.
Okay. Okay.
When did you send those, Randy?
Last night.
Oh, okay. Let me just check and see if it went someplace else.
Okay, other questions for Richard at the moment? Okay, Adam, you have things to add?
The only thing I would add was, Bernie had been said, is that there was a FFM walk through today with Susan Pinkney from Richard's office and myself and Joe and the vendors for the furniture, and that went pretty straightforward. So there's no no surprise anticipated there for when furniture is scheduled to start being delivered on January 9. Otherwise, just as sort of everyone has alluded to, there's just a lot of inspections and coordination with town officials and these sort of checking box items to get through as we go through the next week into week or two. So the more updates at the potential meeting for the end of the month. I don't know, Randy, do you want to talk about that now with more people on?
Sure, we can. We can do that. Since we're meeting this week, next week didn't seem to be a popular meeting time on the 22nd. I think we'd like to cancel the the December 22 meeting. And then schedule a special meeting for the final week of December where we'd consider the pay app and a few other things, I suppose. But that's, but the intention, I think, is to to cancel next week's meeting. So Tasha, I think we'll have to send out another. So Tasha, I think we'll have to send out another survey to see who's available on the week of the final week. So I don't know if we can aim for the 29th, which is a Thursday. But Tasha will query the committee on that.
Otherwise, I was just gonna jump into some of the procurement change order items, the gym floor, that kind of thing.
Yeah. Well, let's talk about the gym floor. First of all, I guess let's do that next. And then we have one other, I have at least one other thing we need to discuss and private on. But okay, we got pictures of the gym floor.
But not at times. This is just from what I snapped while I was walking around today. So this is the section that was referred to earlier that's been sanded and then the clear coat. It's where you can see the sort of the darker layer there.
The color rendition is not right. This is a little bit better, but the earlier shot was just way too gray. What kind of camera are you using?
I've got an old iPhone, very frugal there, Richard. And then you can see the the main flooring where it's just completely unfinished there on the gym floor. So this is sort of in the field in bulk unfinished as compared to the sanded finished service, which is nicer. So the ultimate item before the committee is there an inclination to proceed with this grade two with 100 or was it 700 something square feet of grade one interstitched in for the rest of the gym floor in lieu of waiting for grade one. And then there would also be a credit back to the town for the great, having grade two material as opposed to the grade one elsewhere.
Is it possible that the installer could space out the darker pieces so that there are clumps of them?
I would think so. Al?
Part of their change order settlement, what they're offering is to intersperse about 770 feet of grade one, call out the bad ones, put in the clear ones, roll those aside, and then continue to call any darker ones and put those under the bleachers. So I, I kind of like a test. At the end of the day, I think you're going to maybe get a grade 1.65 instead of a two or a one. I think that's kind of where it's going to fall.
I think they're talking about all the darks in one area, the better, a better dispersment of.
Yeah. But I think with the extra grade ones, that'll become automatic. Like that floor, the way it's installed would need to be broken down and relayed. We can't start from this point. You know what I mean? Continue from where it's already installed because it'll look awful. So we have to.
Yeah.
Take it out.
But I think you're getting at the point, they're going to lay the floor out before they start nailing it in place. I think we, we should allow them the opportunity to look at it before it's finished nailed and say, oh, is it a little too, there's a bunch of darks over here. Can we move those around and put lighter ones in here?
It's kind of tough once that floor is locked in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a question, I guess, I don't know if Newfield or maybe Richard. One of the, one of the things with the grade two flooring is that there were some short pieces that were, I don't know, 16 inches or so in length. And I'm wondering about performance of that and over the long term. Because I presumably there'd be fewer nails in that of just, I don't know, be a couple of nails holding that in place.
I, I don't believe so. So all of these boards are, they fit into each other. So I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah. Randy, I put in a lot of floors and they're with a tongue and groove, and these are what are called end match, meaning that the ends have both a tongue and tongue, have either a tongue or a groove. It's truly not an issue.
Steve, question?
Yeah, I'm just curious how we arrived at the $20,000 credit seems for such an enormously large floor not in keeping with the change order costs we've had going the other direction, like $8,000 for a couple of offset boxes or 6,800 for two outlets, that type of thing.
Yeah, the, the original proposal was a material cost difference between grade one and grade two, which is only $6,000. They provided the backup from the maple flooring manufacturer. That was what was presented first. Yeah, we did. We, we back checked it. We called other flooring installers. We did our own takeoff with our own database. So we know the square foot cost. It was only $6,000. Given the severity of the situation that J.J. Coran, the installing contractor was in, we realized he had a decision to make. So he then offered $20,000 credit in lieu of the $6,000 in an effort and as well as provide you 770 square feet of grade one to make it better. The total cost of just the maple for the 6,600 square feet in the gym is $36,000. We've vetted that out as well. So he's giving you $20,000 off of a $36,000 floor material, just, just the material cost.
Tony?
I was originally firmly in favor of the, the grade two, but I'm not terribly happy with the aesthetics of it. What would happen if we went to, if we stuck with grade one? What's the consequence?
Timeline to get grade one would be the, the major question, I guess.
It's gonna talk unknown if there's enough grade one being run through the kiln and mills. It could be two months. It could be six months before there's enough grade one run. Even the maple flooring manufacturers do not know it.
I can send you a link for some documentation that we've done some research on. The 33 30 seconds thick wood that was specified is not manufactured as a common gym floor entity. For sustainability, they decrease the thickness of the floors, which is what's more commonly used these days. And that's 25, 25, 25 30 seconds. So it's an oddball thickness. They don't like running it because they, once they call out the grade one, the grade two, they got a pile of either one or two that just sits there.
May not be enough for a project.
Yeah. And they have to, so that's kind of the story that we're getting and we verify it through some other Robbins flooring manufacturer. Robbins floors is a competitor of this manufacturer. And they don't even make 33 30 seconds anymore. They only make 25 30 seconds. And we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. We could get a Robbins floor, but we've got too many elevation issues because that's what like part of an inch, yeah, something like that. So it didn't seem to make any sense to bring in Robbins to put in their floor. So that's where we're at.
So Kathy, you saw it yesterday and Ryan as well?
Randy, if I may, just to, just as Richard alluded to before, that first picture that we saw really didn't reflect the beautiful floor, floor that I saw yesterday. I, I, I heard when Ryan said that he felt it was a little busy, but I think it's an elementary school and I'm not exactly sure that the kids and the PE teachers are going to be worried about a little more busyness on the gym floor. But I personally thought it was beautiful. I, I see no reason for us to wait and hold this project up. I, I, I thought it was beautiful, just as I said.
Here, Randy, my, my feedback would be, I would echo what Kathy said. I think it looks very nice. As a lover of wood floors, I, I think it'll look very nice. I, I think maybe one of the happy accidents of it is that, you know, we are talking about a net zero building and sustainability principles. And I think all the knots and hues give it a more natural look than a more homogeneous light colored floor. So from that standpoint, I think it's kind of in keeping with the theme of the building. The only thing I think I, when Kathy mentioned, you know, busyness, and maybe it was mentioned previously and I just didn't hear it said, but it wasn't until we were kind of all hovered around the mock-up of, of the flooring yesterday that I heard somebody say that another key distinguishing characteristic between the grade one and two is the the percentage of the boards that are six feet or more, you know, that it's like 60% or something grade one and like less than 40% with grade two. So I just think it's probably less the, the hues and the not so much as just the shorter segments that kind of give it that, that busier kind of effect. But I, I agree. I think it'll look very nice and, and for an elementary school floor and a net zero building, I think it works.
Peter and then Rich?
So I, I agree, Ryan and Kathy. I think the floor is gorgeous. I think it does evoke more of an environmental feel to it. I, I think if we had not even heard about grade one and grade two, you would walk into that gym thinking it was a normal gym floor. I, I have to say that the alternative is not okay. We cannot open up a building and not have a usable gym floor. I will not have kids in on a gym floor that's plywood or some temporary surface. We have a PE program that, you know, is raring to go. Many elements of this building tip their hats towards our PE teachers and, and our programs to make sure that they were supported. I cannot imagine moving into a building not knowing when we could get grade one wood. And then the length of time that it would take to install that floor. And so I think there's too much of a risk, given a timeline that we're looking and forecasting to get kids into that building. And then to not know when we would have a gym floor and maybe have to wait till summer break before it could even be installed, if then. You know, so I, I, I think there are too many things to risk in terms of timeline and usability of that space. But I, I don't think people will be disappointed. The gym floor in my estimation will look great. And will be enjoyed for many, many years.
Rich and then Tony?
There it is. Okay. Yeah, I, I, I think I, I would prefer that we use the, the, the type two or whatever it's called, wood as well. But I, I do want to say that I'm irritated that I feel like the choice is really taken away from us and I wish that this were caught sooner so that I feel like we, we have to take the number two wood. But I feel like, you know, that, like I said, that choice was removed from us really if we want to get into the building in time.
Yeah. Tony?
Well, it's very clear. We don't have a choice and everybody agrees. So we might as well get this discussion over with and approve the number two floor.
All right. So there's Adam. Is that a motion, Tony?
I move we approve number two floor.
Can I mention a couple of other things? I'll second it, but I'd like to sort of add an amendment.
Okay.
And it would be that Coran has said they put in $20,000 toward this thing. They're sending us another 700 quote unquote guaranteed. And I assume all this would be included in at least the understanding, if not the motion. But I would be happy to take, if they could give it a good faith effort and continue to hunt around where everyone hunts around for the right wood, to use some of that 20,000 to go toward buying more wood, should it be found within the time period that we need. And that's sort of a message to to Newfield, but, but I think it, everybody could benefit.
How, how long are you willing to wait while they did that, Chris?
There's no waiting. No, there's no waiting. This is gonna, they hunt around and they know that they could get, you know, $10,000 back if that matters to them. If they can actually dig up some inventory of this and, you know, in a warehouse or a mill somewhere in Wisconsin or Vermont or wherever they go. It's sort of on the, back on in their court to do it. But I'm saying here's money on the table. If you can find us more of the wood that we originally ordered, we will take it and you can have some of your money back.
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Parliamentary perspective, I, I think that that's a very substantive amendment and it needs to be voted on. So I would recommend that if Chris wants to make this as a motion, that he put it into words and we vote it up or down.
But I think that that would depend on the passage of your motion first.
No, because he's trying to amend my motion.
Then we, yeah, then we would need something.
Okay. So then how about we restart and I can move that. We approve the number two with the refund of $20,000 and the inclusion of the 700, as I recall, 770 square feet of number one maple with the additional whatever condition or, or opportunity of the contractor to provide more number one, assuming it's, it keeps us to schedule. And we will deduct that additional number one cost from our the $20,000 credit that we've been offered. And furthermore, we would assume that it would be done at market price. I didn't really mean to make it as a, I just wanted it really to be to Newfield so that they knew that they could do that. But if Tony feels it needs to be in the motion, there you are.
Kathy had a comment and then I'm going to ask Adam something. We had Kathy?
Two things. Speaking to someone at Newfield yesterday, my understanding was that they can get going on this gym floor ASAP, as long as we approve using the number grade two, whatever it might be. And my second comment is, after looking at the floor yesterday, after teaching PE for 15 years and coaching at the college level basketball, I really don't think adding any more grade one wood is going to make a big difference in an elementary school gym floor. I think what we saw yesterday was was beautiful, perfectly acceptable. I, I don't think there's going to be anyone sitting back and looking, oh, we have too much grade two in here, too little grade one. So I understand what Chris is saying, but I disagree. I think it's more important that we get going right now.
Kathy, I'd just like to clarify.
Okay, Chris, you're cutting out. Hey, Chris, I think we kind of lost you. Tony, you want to respond?
I'm, I'm going to oppose this amendment.
Not at all. And that's what I said. It needs to stay within the timeline, period.
I, I'm going to be opposing.
I did not have any intention of changing it. Well, I offered it as a whole new.
You can't offer it as a whole new amendment. You are offering it as an amendment to my amendment, to my motion.
I actually suggest be a whole new.
I know. You can't do that because my motion is on the floor.
Okay, pardon me.
And I have not withdrawn it. And in fact, I would oppose this amendment because I don't think we need any further time delays whatsoever. And I think what we've been hearing from, from Al is that they have looked for wood and this is all they've got. So I think we should just approve number two and get going.
Hey, as I mentioned, I did second it, but I also want to make clear again that this was with the provision that there be no change in the schedule, no change in the schedule, no change in the schedule.
All right. I, I need parliamentarian. So.
We need to vote on Chris's amendment and then to vote because if it passes, the motion is, would be voted on as amended. If it fails, it would be the original motion.
Okay. So I guess the, the amendment that we will vote on then is whether to direct Newfield to try to find additional grade one wood in addition to the 770 feet with the opportunity for there to be a reduction in the refund to the town. Okay. So, so that's the amendment. All in favor?
We have a second.
I'm in favor.
Oh, yeah.
Second to the amendment?
Is there a second to Chris's amendment? Is there a second to Chris's amendment?
Yeah, uh, okay, Madison. Uh, then, then all in favor of Chris's amendment, please indicate.
I'm in favor.
Hey, uh, uh, any opposed, please indicate. Okay, so the amendment fails. So that brings us back to the original motion, which was from Tony to approve the grade two. Um, wood that was seconded by Chris, so that is on the table now. Um, all in favor of Tony's motion, please indicate. Any opposed? Or any abstentions? Okay, so that passes. So Newfield, you have your direction to get started. Uh, on the gym floor. Okay, Adam, you have other things?
Yes. There are, there were three construction change directives that were approved on an expedited basis by.
So when we're going to get into that with the, with the, um, procurement items and the C C Ds. Can I do one other thing first before we can do that?
They're reading.
And this is, um, some time ago, the, this committee approved a, a system for expedited approvals. Uh, for when things had to happen between meetings. Um, and that was to give a. For a dollar limit up to ten thousand dollars that there would be four people that would have to give approval. Um, this would be, uh, again, between meetings, which was the town manager, the superintendent, the chair of the building committee and the chair of the board of education. Kathy's going on leave for about a month. And would not be available to, um, be involved with those, with the expedited approval process. So. We either have to appoint somebody else to do, um, take that, that role or. If the, if the committee approves, we could have just the town manager, the superintendent and the chair of the building community, community, committee. Um, make those expedited approvals, uh, between meetings. So, um. We need to have something because we, you know, Kathy's not going to be available for us, um, in the short term. So I don't know if there are, yeah, Mary, you have a comment?
Um, having seen all of the expedited decisions that you guys have made, I would. Trust in the decision of the three of you to carry on, but I am happy to step in in Kathy's place if it is desired to have four people.
Yeah, I mean, I think the notion with Kathy was, uh, because of her position as the chair of the board of education. So I, I mean, I think my recommendation would be that we would just go with three people to do those approvals. Um, I would need someone to make that, that motion then to, um, to amend or expedite approval change process. To have those three individuals. Okay, Mary, you'll make that motion?
I will. I will move that going forward in Kathy's absence. Excuse me. Expedited decisions can be made by Ryan, Randy.
And Peter.
And Peter. Thank you. Short term memory issue there.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then all in favor of that motion, please indicate. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, all right. Okay, Adam, sorry to interrupt. You can go ahead now.
Those were two items around my list anyway, so. So I'll, I'll share my screen again. So the three construction change directives that were approved this past week on an expedited basis. The first is C C D eleven. Um, this was for some light fixture work in the elevator shaft. Um, the project had an elevator inspection and within the shaft, there's a certain foot candle rating that's required or code. Um, that was not being met. So the construction change directive was to do the work while some of the crews were still. On hand and could do the work quickly. Um, so that's what, uh, why that was approved on an expedited basis. So there will be with all three of these, there will be a, a follow up potential change order with the final values. With the tickets for labor materials that get, uh, reviewed by Colliers and T S K P. Um, so that was the first one for the elevator light fixtures.
A question, Adam?
Yep.
That one says there's no charge. Does that mean there's no charge right now and it will be later or?
Right now it's a, being tracked on time and materials. So Newfield subcontractors will pull together how much time, you know, this type of worker spend versus that type of worker spend. How much the light fixtures cost, gather that together and then put it forth in a change order. So right now there's. No cost only because it's not defined yet. Um, it'll become defined in the, in the potential change order. Uh, the second one, C C D twelve, this was for the, uh, dry well that we mentioned earlier. At the, uh, um, at the retention pond. Um, so this was basically, uh, this is a sketch done by the civil engineer, but effectively it's a, it's a, they dug up some dirt. And put in larger sized rocks with some filtration fabric and, and basically you would allow any additional water. To filter down into the better draining layers, uh, beneath the top soil. I don't know if there's any other images. So, you know, basically it's, you dig a pit, you put in some rocks. And that helps the drain to, to dumb it down quite a bit. Um, so that was the second construction change directive that was approved. Uh, any questions on that one before I go to the third? And then the third one was for some electrical work in the kitchen area. Regarding some breaker sizes and circuit to heat trace, um, as well as a, a time clock. Uh, power need for the freezer evaporator. Um, this was, uh, what have we done on expedited basis because of the upcoming inspections. Um, to get this work calling ident- or cleared out and resolved. Um, as Cole Rowan identified that, uh, those circuits weren't, weren't in the, the documents. Um, as originally intended. So in a similar fashion as the other two, this will be tracked on labor tickets and material tickets. And then we'll do a reconciliation P C O once it's all done. But no action item need, action needed on any of those three. That was just part of the, uh, follow back up of this committee. Uh, the other item that, um, is, uh, there's a, I did put a draft motion in the meeting packet earlier, uh, today. Um, it's for, uh, additional authorization, uh, not to exceed forty two hundred dollars for Weston and Sampson. Uh, they are the firm that does our stormwater monitoring. So as the project continues into twenty twenty three, there are portions of the site that won't be complete, some of the plantings, et cetera. Um, the project should be required to continue monitoring the stormwater as. Uh, as the site persists until the finalization of all the site elements. Um, so effectively, we're just extending the allocation of, um, of monies to Weston and Sampson. Based on the per inspection rate that we've been doing for a year and a half now. Um, so that just got finalized this morning. Um, so that was, was it, what's the draft motion in your, uh, your packet? Any questions on that? I can pull up the motion if desired.
See no questions then. Is there a motion to increase, increase the purchase order for Weston Sampson? Uh, for stormwater inspection services for amount not to exceed forty two hundred dollars? Kathy, thank you. Second, uh, Steve. Uh, any further questions? If not, then all in favor of the motion, please indicate.
Hi.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay.
That's it for procurement for tonight.
Okay. Uh, then the next item on the agenda is an executive session. For, for executive session, um, if someone would make that motion, then we invite in. Um, Adam and Scott and Ryan Ailsworth, the town manager and Peter Dart, the superintendent. Is there someone that would make the, the motion for the executive session?
I would move, I'm sorry.
I move we go into executive session in accordance with Connecticut general statutes. This executive session to include. Ryan Ailsworth, Peter Dart. Who, who else?
Uh, Scott and Adam.
Scott and Scott Tillman and Adam, what, what, what is this?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Um, then, uh, we can excuse Newfield and Richard. And, uh, everybody else other than the ones invited in. Tasha, do you want to wait, go into the waiting room?
Yes, um, I have a question. So will, um. Newfield and Richard need to come back after executive session? Should I put them in the waiting room?
They, they don't need to. They can be excused if they wish, if, or we could put you in the waiting room until we're done with that, but. You're welcome to, you're welcome to go and.
Okay, all right. Um, so, um, Peter, I'm going to have to make you the host because I'll have to put myself in the waiting room. I'm sorry, not Peter, Randy.
You can make Peter, I.
Either one, you got it, Randy.
Okay, so Randy, I'm going to make you the host and then you can put me in the waiting room and, um. Pause the recording.
Yeah.
And then when we come back, you start the recording.
I understand somebody has asked for closed captioning. Should, that should be closed as well.
I see that participant was asked for. I took that off. Okay. So, um, Peter, did you pause the record? Randy, did you ca- pause the recording?
Uh, I gotta find, oh. Okay, we have exited executive session. Um, uh, for the record, um, our representatives from Colliers left executive session at five oh eight P M. And we were out of executive session at five eleven P M. Um, is there a motion regarding a contract, um, extent, Mary?
Yes, Randy, I would like to make a motion that we approve the extension of the Colliers contract as specified in their letter dated. December fourteenth of twenty twenty two.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Uh, Steve. Uh, then all in favor of this motion, please say aye or indicate. Okay, we have a thumbs up from Chris. Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. Thank you all. Uh, and with that, I would accept the motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Kathy, Kathy enthusiastically moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, and then thank you. And then a reminder, next, um. Weeks, uh, meeting on December twenty two will be. Um, canceled and we'll look forward to having a meeting then last week of the month. Um, so we'll see you then. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Hi, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Hi.